Will, are you a host or co-host?
I think so.
Okay, you have the option, oh no, you have the option to leave but not end. Okay, my camera and mic isn't working.
Uh-oh.
It was working, but I think it's somehow connected to the stuff in the other room.
Uh-oh. Jane? Jane? Jane, are you there?
Yes, I am, Will.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you now, I had, I didn't realize I'd turned my volume down.
So, I'm getting invalid ID, uh, meeting ID everywhere I try to get into this board meeting.
Try, try, I was just sending messages to people, we're having technical difficulties, you need to go to the website. Or, or there's a new link that was sent out.
Oh, oh, how does the clerk get away with this, so, two meetings in a row?
It's complicated.
It's also not my responsibility, Jane, you're a-
Technology and, and somehow things got disconnected, and so we, we shifted, and then, um, the, so that's part of the problem, and then the meeting was set up improperly, I don't know how that happened.
Okay, I, is, okay, well, so everyone's in the same boat, so here's something that came up from Christie.
Uh-huh.
Alright, I'll try to get in.
Okay.
Uh, Alec sent a text, he just fell into his head.
I saw that, I sent him a message saying that I was sorry.
Okay, sounds great. Well, let's, let's, let's be strong.
Yes.
Get us through this agenda, please.
I'm trying, I'm gonna do my best.
Sounds great, thank you.
Right, bye.
Can you hear me now, Will?
Are you ready?
Great, thank you. I just wanna, um, thank Christie Aiken, and Fran, and David, and everybody who's worked so hard over this last year of a pandemic to, uh, quickly learn how to use Zoom. And I wanna thank everybody for their hard work, there have been a couple of blips, um, and, uh, Jane, it is not solely my fault. Um, uh, our staff thought that they had the problem solved after this happening at the planning commission and the board, so, uh, would ask everybody for a little bit of grace and compassion, and just gratitude for everybody who works so hard to make things go right more often than they go wrong. And Will, can you bring in any other members?
Yeah, let's see.
I'm looking for Alec.
Alec, um, uh, just sent a text a few minutes ago saying that he had an accident, and, um-
Recording in progress.
And he will be late. Sorry, I was just sending someone information about where to find the link. Um, okay, letting people in. Attendees. How do I, how do I know if they're in or not in? Looks like everyone's in. Jessica, I'm not seeing anyone in a waiting room, it looks like everyone's already in. Where is? There I go.
Can you hear me, Will?
Yes.
Alright, so I'm logged in, but I, I don't have a video up yet, please.
I can't hear anything.
You can't hear anything?
No, just take it, are you, you've got host control?
Yeah.
I'll go sit in with David or Donna.
It's funny, I could hear, I could hear you at first.
Yeah, but I can't hear.
You can't hear, okay. Um, alright. And to let people in, I just allow them to talk, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then to move, um, people to, you know, from our board members, you just, um, move them to, from attendee to panelist.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you should get a box if somebody is coming in that's still in the waiting room.
Yeah, I'm not seeing people in the waiting room, but, um-
Yeah, there's no one in the waiting room, everybody comes in automatically as attendees.
Oh, okay.
And then they can be promoted to panelists. Um, and I think what happened here, 'cause we've been installing the Granicus video component, I think that these meeting settings somehow are still connected to the audio and the video in the other room.
Huh, geez. Alright, I'm not seeing, so, I'm, I'm, I don't see anyone who needs to, who's like a panelist who hasn't already come in, do you? Okay.
Uh, Will, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, so I think so I'm here via audio but not video, and, I mean, that's good, but I'm seeing a lot of notes coming in from folks still looking for this link.
Um, okay.
I'll, I'll take care of this last one that came in.
The link on the top of the webpage, uh, was working.
Okay, sorry, I'm just doing a quick review to make sure I let in everybody who's a participant here, alright. Okay. Alright.
I just sent links to Seth, and Seth and Doug, it's the only notes I'm seeing so far.
Okay, Jane, I found you, and I just promoted you to panelist. So, you should be able to use a, a video link now, I think. Alright. I think Jessica's trying to find the access another way. Just gonna give her a minute to do that.
Recording in progress.
Are you ready to go?
Yeah, you just get started, if you could let me in, I joined as Jessica Flintoff, that different Jessica.
Oh, alright.
Okay, just get started, though. I'll just listen.
Alright, I just promoted you.
Hi, Will, I'm here.
Okay, great, alright.
Thank you.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, everyone, uh, thanks for your patience, um, I call this meeting to order at, uh, and it's this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at, uh, 7:18. Um, we were planning to hold this meeting in person, um, but we encountered some technical difficulties with our hybrid meeting technology in the meeting hall. Luckily, we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. Uh, this is, in fact, the last meeting at which that will be in effect. Um, the Board, um, has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls the roll, members of the Board of Trustees should state that they are participating remotely and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Will, please call the roll.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm getting set up.
Alright, I'll call the roll.
Thank you.
Sir, Supervisor Hathaway, uh, participating remotely from Scioto Township. Treasurer Palmer.
Here, participating in Scioto Township.
Uh, Clerk Flintoff.
Here, participating in Scioto Township.
Trustee Corto. Uh, you, we're missing your audio. Still have, still have no audio. Let me see if there's something that I can do at my end.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, present Washtenaw, or, sorry, sorry Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Trustee Jerome is, uh, absent. Trustee Noel.
Here, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Uh, Trustee Vogel.
I hear, Scioto Township.
Uh, we have Quorum. Um, the next is the adoption of the agenda. Um, and I propose, uh, the following amendments to the agenda, um, remove items G3, designation of mediation representative for Botsford Trust litigation, and G4, Wolverine Pickleball Conditional Rezoning, um, OA number 21009. Um, unless there are other modifications to the agenda, I move that we adopt the agenda as-
They have a modification.
Um, Clerk Flintoff.
Sure, a proposed, uh, modification to remove I1, letter of engagement for legal services from the agenda to be placed on the next regular board meeting. Um, once, so hopefully January 11th, but once the township receives a written determination from Foster Swift that there are no potential conflicts of interest given its representation of the township in the Brant versus Scioto case, and a written determination from Tokyo Marine HCC that it has no objection to the township's engagement with Foster Swift for both litigation defense in the Brant v Scioto case and the General Counsel Services.
Um, well, I don't support that change to the agenda, um, Trustee Noel.
I would support that.
Alright, well, it's, um, been, uh, there's a, a motion to um, modify the agenda by removing item I1, uh, and there is support for that, um, I will, um-
I can give a little background, um-
I, you, you just, you just did, um-
I gave, I gave a rationale, I just, um, want to make sure the Board knows, um, Tom Maher, our township attorney, advised me that we should make sure directly that our insurance company would be okay with this arrangement. Um, as you know, that answer is pending, um, Tom is also out until next week. So, it may be okay, but, um, certainly, um, Tom advised us, uh, he would wanna make sure it's okay with our insurance company. Um, the bills are starting to come in for this case, and if you remember the October 11th letter from Tokyo, Tokyo Marine, um, they are not paying these bills, right? You got that, we're paying these bills, and we will hopefully get reimbursed. I don't wanna do anything to disrupt that relationship with our insurance company, as these are just starting to come in. Um, and so, again, um, hopefully we'll get this resolved by January 11th, as soon as we get a email back, but especially because if we're wrong, it's gonna be our, our residents, our general fund paying these bills.
With that, um, I would, um, call the roll on that motion to, uh, remove item I1. Um, are you prepared to call the roll, um, Clerk Flintoff, or shall I do it?
I can do it, thank you. So, motion by Flintoff, support by Noel. Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff, yes? Corto?
No.
Jerome, is absent. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion fails 4 to 2.
Um, I move to adopt the agenda as, um, modified with the two items, uh, removed item G3 and G4. Is there support? Part support, support by Corto, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you, the next, the next item is communications to the Board of Trustees, and, um, before I turn to the clerk, um, and to, um, offer a couple of motions, uh, related to this, um, item, um, I, uh, would like to acknowledge that the, um, communications to the Board contain a letter of resignation from Trustee Vogel, um, effective January 31st, and, uh, the determinations from the Compensation Commission. Um, these are, are matters that, um, are very important, and, um, we will take these up at our January 11th meeting, our regular meeting, um, I do want to also share, uh, some, as, uh, information that I provided, um, it's, it's been published, uh, but I have not stated it in the meeting. Uh, and that is that, um, I am honoring the determination of the Compensation Commission with regard to my own salary, um, in, even though I, uh, disagree with the Compensation Commission's rationale, uh, that this is a part-time position, that Supervisor's position is part-time. Um, I believe it is a full-time position, and I intend to continue treating it as a full-time position. Um, but I will honor their determination, and, um, I intend to one way or another, um, um, do so, I, uh, at the, at, at present, uh, the way of doing so that I've, uh, found within my power is to donate back to the township the difference between the salary that was authorized in, um, August, uh, by the Board, um, of $72,000 as annual salary. Um, so I will, um, be making a donation back to the township of the difference between that and the, uh, determination by the Compensation Commission of a $40,000 salary, and I won't, um, wait until the Compensation Commission's determination would, uh, take effect in April, I'm going to begin doing this in January. Um, and, uh, with that, Clerk Flintoff, I believe you have, um, a motion or two motions that you would like to make with regard to these matters.
Sure, thank you, um, with it, those two significant communications, um, to the Board, we have a couple of statutory deadlines to deal with them, and if we don't deal with them and don't affirmatively place them on our agenda, actions happen, so inaction is as much of a policy choice as action is. On December 14th, I received and filed the December 13th letter from Trustee Vogel regarding her request regarding her request to resign as trustee. I know she's going to submit a signed copy to make it official, but it's really only if and until the Board accepts the resignation that it, that it's effective. And that's per 41.56. The effective date of resignation would be, then be January 31st, as stated is trustee Vogel's desire. Once it's effective, then the township board may consider if the township board would within 30 days of January 31st appoint a person to fill the vacancy, or if we would defer that to the county clerk to call a special election to fill the vacancy. Also, as Will mentioned, the Compensation Commission met and made determinations, filing them with me on December 17th. That started the 30-day clock for MCL 41.95 subsection B, after which determination shall be effective unless rejected during that period of time by two-thirds of the board elected and serving. I think these two matters, out of respect for trustee Vogel, the Compensation Commission, these are the kind of matters that should be almost mandatorily on a board agenda. And, but they are not. When I discussed this in our, our meeting with Supervisor Hathaway, you know, stating procedurally, the supervisor stating that he will do something is not the same as the board stating that it will be on the agenda. And therefore, I'd recommend the first of two motions. A motion to place the following items on the January 11th Board of Trustees' agenda. The consideration of trustee Vogel's letter of resignation, the determination of salary for the township supervisor, determination of salary for township clerk, determination of salary for township treasurer, and determination of salary for township trustees. That is the, the first of two motions, Will.
I'll support that motion.
Motion by Flintoff, support by Hathaway?
Is there any further comment, or can we call a roll? Trustee Vogel?
I will simply make the observation, Jessica, I made a specific request that the supervisor and the administrator handle the process of my resignation. It was heading for the January 11th board meeting. It's not at all clear to me why you needed to assert yourself, because we were heading for this outcome anyway. So I don't know why your motion is necessary.
But hey, it's necessary in my mind.
If you feel better making this motion, we were heading for the 11th anyway, so hey.
Yeah, no, the supervisor, it, the, the reason is if we don't act, Jane, then it, it kicks over to the county clerk.
Trustee Corto?
I resist that line of thinking, Jessica. I don't believe this is your role. You have asserted yourself in a way you were asked not to.
Trustee Vogel?
Already heading for the January 11th agenda.
Trustee Vogel, thank you. I've called on trustee Corto.
Supervisor Hathaway, I, I heard Clerk Flintoff say that there's a 30-day period to replace a resigning trustee, but my understanding from previous conversations with Attorney Fink is that it's a 45-day period. Attorney Fink is on the call. Could you ask him to please clarify that timeline for us?
I, I believe you are correct. I don't know that we need to bring in the township attorney in order to confirm that.
Thank you.
In any case, the statute is what the statute is, and we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll work with it. Are there any other comments before we call the roll on this motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion passes 4 to 2. The next motion I'd like to offer is in regard to what I gave you a heads up about earlier today, is a request to call for a special meeting, a short one, the week of January 3rd, to confer with our township attorney, Tom Aher. The Board, I believe, should confer with our council in closed session prior to our regular board meeting of January 11th. David Rowley and I conferred about this issue, and he has concurred with the recommendation. So given the implement, implications of the Brant case, I want to first meet with our township attorney to understand if and how any board action or inaction on the compensation determinations may impact the township's interests. We've had only one closed session with our attorney on this matter. And so with that, I'd like to take, make a motion to call for a special meeting the week prior, the week of January 3rd, with a specific date and time to be determined by the administrator in consultation with township attorney Tom Aher, to consult with the township attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the case of Kathleen Brant, the township of Scioto, now pending in Washtenaw County Circuit Court Case Number 2021 1016AW. The Board would intend to go into closed session under the authority of MCL 15.268 in this special meeting, because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the township.
I'll support. Are there comments? I don't see any comments. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. I think I, I sense that somebody's unmuted, and I'm having trouble determining whom it is, but we seem to be getting some background noise. So if, if everyone could check and make sure, unless you're a panelist participating in the meeting, that you are muted, that would, that would be helpful.
Will?
Yes?
You said that concludes public comment. We haven't started public comment yet.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. That's my, that's my mistake. That include, that concludes communications to the Board of Trustees. I looked at the wrong part of my agenda. That moves us on to public comment. And with that, let me introduce public comment. So, let's see here. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. Trustee Jerome, oh, well, actually, trustee Jerome is usually our timekeeper. Trustee Vogel, will you serve as timekeeper in his absence?
Sure, let's see.
Okay, thank you. So trustee Vogel will serve as timekeeper and will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining, and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. I will remind members of the public that you are addressing your comments to the Board. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers, and please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back-and-forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. To the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. Now, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? And am I the one who's letting them in and out, Jessica?
I'm having trouble. I, I think I can do that. I got it.
Okay.
Okay, first up, I see Caroline, Caroline Altmar, followed by Kathleen Brant. Caroline?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment about the beginning of this meeting. Ms. Vogel, your comment, I think, was exactly the reason why I think you're not being on the Board any longer. It's a very good idea. And Mr. Hathaway, frankly, it was your job, not Clerk Flintoff's job, to defend the technology issues. Not for Jessica, or Clerk Flintoff, to have to defend herself and call for civility and call for, you know, equanimity in this meeting. That was your job, Mr. Hathaway, which I think is clearly another reason why I think that you're very, one more tote on the Board as to a failing of your leadership. I just am so disappointed with you two. Oh my God, I just can't even believe it. And to Clerk Flintoff, you were the epitome of grace under fire, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Next up is Kathleen Brant, followed by Gil Chrisman. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brant, Scioto Township. I want to address the letter of engagement from Foster Swift. I read through the letter that was presented to the township on December the 15th, and I started to wonder why certain elements were in this letter. So it states a special counsel will be invite, involved in certain issues. And it specifically points out eminent domain. So I'd like to just talk about eminent domain for a second and share with the public some things that have been going on with eminent domain. So back on February the 3rd, 2021, there was a question from, there was statement from one of the landholders on Zee Road about giving up their property. And here's a note from Jack Knowles that went to Jane Vogel. And this person says no, and Jack says, this is nothing new. It's always been a no. I continue to believe we should start the prep work for the eminent domain process, even if we decide not to proceed in that matter. There is upfront work that we could be doing in anticipation of that possible route. And Jane replies, well said, Jack, not enough new news. And then further, there's another letter on March the 9th. And it's basically the same context. One second, I'm trying to find that. It's the same information, and it talks about the Luoma property. And again, this person, the previous person was John Norton, and he said absolutely not. And Jack replied, well, let's start eminent domain. The second letter is about the Luoma, Luoma property. And again, Jack mentions that we should get, we, the Board should get, or Jane should get lawyer Fink to draw up the papers for eminent domain. So I think there's a relationship between the services that Mr. Hathaway is trying to engage, because it seems to me that there will be further attempts.
30 seconds.
Yeah, thanks, Jane. There'll be further attempts to exercise eminent domain as part of the Zee pathway. So let's all be aware of that. Also, my comments are an opinion. So if anyone would like to challenge that, then I would ask that I get time for rebuttal. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Gil Chrisman, followed by Rob Pattinson. Gil?
She has no.
Gil Chrisman?
I clicked the unmute. Am I now being heard?
You're good, yep.
Yes.
Thank you. My, I have one comment, and that is when some board members stoop to calling the Scioto residents as trumpets, it seems a very pathetic embarrassment by these Scioto representatives, because then they're just mimicking former President Trump's efforts to circumvent our lawful democratic process and acknowledge the will of the people. This name-calling of those who question accountability or transparency is very childish and very unprofessional. I would hope that our officials would be above that. That's what I have to say. Thank you for this opportunity and courtesy to listen.
Thank you, Gil. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township. Just want to make sure the Board is aware that with the issues tonight, with the Zoom connection, that there are some people who are going to try to attend this meeting who will not be able to. And I'm not sure what the liability for the township is in terms of the Open Meetings Act, that you are now holding a meeting that is not exactly public. Yes, it's an adaptation, but it doesn't follow the letter of the law. And then, secondly, in tonight's 537-page agenda packet, 130-some pages of that is the transcript from the July 17th, or August 17th, board meeting. And I would, again, like to, I would just say that the frustration of this township spending $8,500 for a transcript of information that each trustee could have gotten for themselves is another measure of the, the malpractice of this Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. The only other hand I see is Gillian Carey. Gillian?
Oh, good evening. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, listening to Kathleen Brant's public comment and those emails that she was reading from Jack, or between Jack Knowles and Jane Vogel regarding eminent domain, those dates are February 3rd and March 9th of 2021. And when I sent, when I mentioned about eminent domain, I received a nasty email from Jane Vogel saying I was spreading a false narrative. This is what she says. I can speak with confidence that there is zero interest in any such use of eminent domain, zero. You lie, and then you turned around and you made it look like I was spreading a false narrative, and you wonder why residents don't trust you? You're a liar. Not only that, anybody listening, a resident in Scioto Township, if they're going to take or want to take your property, you make them take it by eminent domain. By statute, they have to pay you. It's the law.
Thank you, Gillian. So a few more hands. Harvey Summers, followed by someone named President. Harvey?
Harvey Summers of 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. I was off for the last 20 minutes for evening Jewish services, so I missed the most recent conversation, but I was thinking about and wanted to comment about the adoption of the agenda tonight when I heard the clerk asked for item I4 to be deleted, and she gave a series of reasons. And then the supervisor opposed I4 with no reason. And I just wanted to say, as I was thinking during services about this, it's probably bad to interrupt my thinking that way, that, you know, at a time when the trust, in the trustees as a group, is so uneven for a proposal to be put forward with a reason, and the opposition just saying no, when it involves the risk of the citizens of this township being liable for money out of the general fund, I have to say, that made me very uncomfortable. So I just have to say, you've got somebody asking for something with a reason, the other members of the Board just saying no. That was really troubling. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Next up is someone named Resident, followed by Stephen King. Resident?
Hi, this is Margery Knapp at 4151 Skyline Court in Scioto Township. I enlisted as resident. I wanted to come on and just say to trustee Vogel and trustee Hathaway particularly that listening has made me just really sorry for the way that you have been treated in these meetings and the way that people speak with you from the township. And that I appreciate all of your energy and efforts and your willingness to be engaged in our township. I'd also like to say that to the rest of the board meeting members, I hope that you don't stand for this and that you also recognize that this is not an appropriate way for your colleagues to be treated and spoken to. And that's all. Actually, one other question. I was under the impression that chat would be disabled. It's rather distracting to watch the residents have separate side conversations and be voicing conversation during not public comment time. I'm wondering if that will be disabled or if that chat stays enabled for the remainder of the meeting? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Stephen King, followed by Paula G.
Thank you, Clerk Flintoff. This is Steve King, Scioto Township resident, Lamp Lighter Drive. Very fine. Thank you. My one comment tonight is the fact that we built the walkway from nowhere, which I've called it, which is now extending from the eastern part of Zee Road between Dexter Road and Miller. And the fact that I do not drive an SUV or a large SUV, whenever I approach this intersection, which is rather regularly going westbound, the, that I want to call it a fence rail, obscures traffic. And I really believe this is very dangerous, because I have to get very close to the egress of Miller Road onto Zee Road so that I can see oncoming traffic coming from my left. And if this continues to happen with these type of things, which I consider a like-to-have type of project that's going on with the township, I think this is something that should not ever happen again. And when I say like-to-have, this is going to be short. Being trained in program and project management, there's an old thing called the Moscow list, must-have, should-have, could-have, won't-have. If you organize these things into a won't-have, when you understand the danger to someone, this is a won't-have. I cannot see oncoming traffic coming from my left, which is the most dangerous part of traffic coming there. A must-have would be road maintenance. Living on Lamp Lighter Drive, there are two paths on Lamp Lighter Drive, which are nearly impassable, that have not been treated by the township or the county for a number of weeks and months. And when you build a several million dollar, about 100-yard walkway, which is used by no one, I consider this a very, very egregious use of township funds. It's a nice-to-have. It's not a must-have or a should-have, like treating roads and taking care of the things that should be taken care of for township residents. And so if you consider anything else, please consider that, because if you do consider another walkway like this, I will vehemently oppose it, and I will bring other people to do that. This is just not right. Because in going to church services this past Thank you very much. Going to church services early morning, I started to pull out when there was a car coming without lights, and I had to break very quickly. That was dangerous to me, and I want that to be taken into account. And I appreciate your time for that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. I also want to acknowledge Alec Jerome has joined us. He joined us at around 7:40 PM. So welcome, Alec. Next up is Jonathan, I'm sorry, next up is Paula G., followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Paula?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Paula.
Yeah, well, first, Steve King's thing. They let for three, four years the Meyer-Zee intersection be a place where one or two accidents happen a week, knew all about it with a study. But the DDA can come up with money to help put a roundabout down here with Washtenaw Road Committee on Zee and Liberty. But my thing is, every time I hear it read about how people shouldn't be making faces, et cetera, is Ms. Vogel in particular, I didn't watch that in real time. And I know the hour ran late till 12:30. I watched most of it. Is the faces that some of the board members make, maybe they should not put their face picture up while they're speaking with the rolling of the eyes. And whoever thinks that people are speaking upset with some of the board members is because they have letters like with Jack Knowles, who shouldn't be involved anymore other than just as a resident, not with OHM telling how to take people's land with another current board member. Right there to me is when I think that board member in collusion shouldn't have to have signatures collected to leave. Should automatically just resign. And that's my opinion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Pat Stein. Jonathan?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, as well, I'd like to congratulate Jessica for behaving in a manner far better than I would had I seen someone who knows so little about technology and not having any facts at all try to blame me at first drop of the hat. And I think that's indicative and very illuminary to anyone looking at this as an example of how certain members of this board just gang up on Jessica for whatever political or other reasons. And so when that happens, it's not surprising. But when it's so blatant, because it was the true voice, it was the voice speaking that nobody, that thought nobody was listening. The true voice comes out, and it's nasty. It's nasty, it's rude, and it's meant to be harmful. And so if I was looking at myself in a similar position, acting and behaving that way, not only would I write a resignation letter, I'd sign it too and not play this game. And it is 30 days. Look it up. Thanks, all. Take care.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Pat Stein, followed by Pam Boyd. Pat?
Pat Stein, 1413 South Zee Road, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County. I just want to state that Steve King's comments about the railing or the white fence or whatever you want to call that obstruction on Zee Road. I was coming west on Miller today, and I had to turn turn south on Zee. I was coming from, while dropping off petitions at a volunteer's house. And I have an SUV, and I could not see above that railing without coming into the intersection. It is very dangerous. So I don't know if I need to speak to the committee that constructed it or the Washtenaw County Road Commission, but they definitely need a change in that area before someone does lose their life. So that's all I have to say. Oh, no, I don't. In regards to Jonathan's comment about people with no experience in electronic devices and whatnot, I too was surprised at Jane's comment, even though she didn't realize she was, that her microphone was on. I mean, someone that, meeting after meeting, can't even unmute an iPhone, has no area of, no grounds to really criticize Jessica, but that is the standard practice of Jane. So I guess we shouldn't expect much more. On that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jeff Jackson. Pam?
Good evening. I have two quick comments. My first one is Supervisor Hathaway, I would like to request that if you are donating back your salary, that you please make it clear that there are no benefits to you as a tax write-off in that move. That if that is the case, we want you, I want you to find a different way in which to make that change in your salary. The other one is, listen, guys, I've been to all these meetings, and I had a lot of hope when this board was seated last year. And I had a lot of hope going forward. But very quickly, some on this board were attacking residents. And it was, it was not behavior we were expecting. It was very much a shock that our, some of our board was seemingly angry at us for pointing out things that we were concerned about. So I would say that the backlash that you tend to get is, falls on your own shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jeff Jackson. Jeff?
Good evening. This is the season of the year where we really should be focusing on compassion and love for everybody involved. So I would like to just take a moment to say to everybody involved in this meeting, whether you are a board member or a resident who's listening in, please have a safe and happy holiday season, and I wish everybody the best for 2022. I would like to follow that up by seconding the clerk calling out her staff for all the hard work they have put in. I have worked in high tech for over 40 years, and I still face frustrations with technology on an almost daily basis. And it, sometimes it just is a technology not living up to what it needs to be. And I think we would all benefit from having a little more patience, a little more compassion, and a little more courtesy to all involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jeff. And we have 43 people in attendance and no more Zoom hands. Will?
Thank you. I just, I'm going to take an opportunity to respond to a question of fact. I looked it up, and I think I understand where the confusion may be about 30 or 45 days. A board may appoint someone to fill a vacancy up to 30 days prior to the effective date of the resignation. However, the township board has 45 days from the effective date of that resignation in which to appoint a person to fill the vacancy. So there, so in some ways
Two deadlines.
Yeah, there's sort of two, two different deadlines, one sort of leading up to the effective date and one after the effective date. With that, we move on to reports. And for this meeting, we have written reports from several sources, but we are dispensing with oral presentations of reports in order to save time. So I hope people will look at those written reports, and if you have questions, please follow up via email or by phone after the meeting. There is, that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda as amended. Is someone prepared to make the model motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Moved by Palmer. Do we have support?
Support.
Support by Corto. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Yes. Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
That brings us to unfinished business. We have none on this agenda. So we'll move on to new business. The item is possible action on a letter of engagement for legal services. And I would like to make a brief comment about this. I know there's, there's been some discussion and there's some concerns that were raised earlier in the meeting. And several members of the public have commented on this. I brought this forward because I feel like we, the board, the township, has been engaged in kind of a process for the past year where it's become apparent that we are generating way more work for our township attorney than our township attorney is able to respond to. And, you know, this is not meant in any way to either denigrate our township attorney. I think we all have the utmost respect in admiration for Jim Fink, our township attorney. Jim was appointed by this board to a four-year term as our township attorney about a year ago, and this is not meant to impact that action in any way. This is a recognition that we need additional resources, we need additional help in order to accomplish the work that needs to be done. I have consulted with our township attorney, Jim Fink, about this. I've consulted with the township administrator before bringing this forward. This is an opportunity now for the board to deliberate about this this action. And I, I hope that we can talk about it and, you know, maintain civility. And that we can move forward with this this evening rather than delaying this. In part, because I am convinced that we need this help and that we've needed it for some time. And that a delay doesn't really help us in any manner. I know that there have been some concerns. The clerk mentioned these earlier in the meeting. I don't feel that these are concerns that merit any kind of delay. And we have with us today Michael Homier, who is the head of the municipal practice at Foster Swift. And he is available to respond to questions as well. So with that, I would like to ask that we have Michael Homier and our township attorney, Mr. Fink, available for answering questions about this from the members of the board.
Well, may I add, I've got kind of three areas that I want to discuss with the board, and I was wondering if I could just piggyback a little bit on what you were saying about keeping Jim as our township attorney and reminding the board a little bit more. It was, it was at our first meeting, I think, 11:24:20, we appointed Jim to a four-year term as our township attorney, which is in the statute. And that has meaning to be the township attorney. And Will and Donna, David, Jim and I had an opportunity to talk about this Monday morning. And would, would ask, Will, as we're having this conversation, if you might look a little more the model motion that you have in the packet, because it does still include the language township attorneys for Michael Homier. And I definitely want to at least, you know, make clear that And I definitely wanna at least, you know, make clear that I don't wanna get in a situation where we have two township attorneys. In whole, we have about seven attorneys who work for us typically on specialized things. What would be new and different about this is this would be for general counsel services. I do wanna note our budget because, Will, I do disagree that there's zero fiscal impact. Out of our seventy thousand dollar budget for general attorney work this year, with the bills that we're paying tonight, we will have spent sixty-five thousand. So we've got about five thousand left with four months to go in the fiscal year. This excludes all of the Gelman work, which I know that is coming back to the next board meeting for another appropriation. So certainly, there's going to be another appropriation for general legal work. Um, Will, I do um, respectfully disagree. Um, I'm gonna steal that from David Rowley. Um, respectfully disagree. Um, about the work that Jim has. Jim is supportive of this proposal. Um, I had a long conversation with him. I think part of what's frustrating about this is it's December twenty-eighth, and it's contentious, and it's new, and it's urgent, and I don't believe it is urgent. Um, my observation as the one who approves the invoices for our attorneys is that we have used a lot of Jim's time for non-attorney work for drafting motions, drafting basic documents, having very long meetings. In the scope of work proposed, there's nothing particular. Will mentioned that his thought would be that Michael could maybe do some facilitation of the board around rules of order, um, which would be fine. Um, I, I would offer, I think some of the work our township attorney has been doing is work that we should be doing or work that David, our new administrator, could be doing. So I'd like us to think about what type of work we really need attorneys to do versus other professionals.
Are there members of the board who have questions for um, either Mike Homier or for um, our township attorney, Jim Fink regarding this proposal? Trustee Noel?
Okay, I have some general comments about process, which I conveyed to you this afternoon, Will. I think that in terms of how we handle this, the board has not deliberated or discussed uh, taking on additional legal services. So we need to determine what we want. We need to evaluate our current services, identify what additionally we are seeking exactly. Is this just gonna be um, project work or what is it going to be exactly? And if indeed we are attempting to engage a new law firm, then we need to consider going through a bid process. When I was on the board previously in two thousand and four, our board sought bids for legal counsel from multiple law firms. And we ended up choosing Foster Swift. So I've worked with Mike and several of his colleagues. It, it's an excellent firm. I have no qualms about the people or the firm, but I do have concerns that this was put on the agenda tonight in between the holidays. When the board hasn't deliberated on this issue, and we could have a long agenda, I don't know, maybe not. But it seems like the process here has been flawed. That leads me to the observation that our board, this board has used flawed processes on other situations in the past. And that is my frustration. So I would like to hear more information as to how you or Jessica would propose utilizing the services of a new law firm or Mike. And then I do have some questions for Mike, but I'm gonna have, give other people a chance to comment after you've responded to how you would envision utilizing these services.
Are there other members of the board who would like to comment or have questions to direct to um, either of the uh, attorneys?
Well, Will, are you gonna respond at all? Cause I have questions about how you would envision utilizing these services.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. I thought we were going around um, to members of the board. Um, so you would like me to um, elaborate on how I see um, Mike and his team um, serving the township?
Yes.
Well, um, part of what I've observed um, over the past year is um, that we have been placing, yes, uh, as, as Clerk Flintoff said, a variety of demands on our township attorney. Um, I think, you know, uh, we've been engaging in some lengthy processes um, where he has played a role. He probably hasn't played as much in the past with the township. Um, you know, helping to guide process, um, helping us to, um, for example, work on uh, rules of order. Um, and um, I, it's been very time-consuming. Um, I've, I've seen how much of his time it takes, and it may be that um, you know, um, it isn't strictly uh, legal work, um, you know, but it is helping us through processes in order to function more effectively as a township government. And um, whatever we have placed in, in terms of demands on our township attorney, um, it's taking up a lot of his time and it's pulling him away from other tasks. I, uh, when you and I met um, earlier today, I, I, I talked about one example. One, one thing that is a particular um, um, strength of um, our township attorney is um, working on things such as land use and easements. Um, we had the Downtown Development Authority worked for um, quite some time in order to bring forth um, um, bus shelters um, that it, it had purchased um, the uh, kits for. Uh, there was going to be five bus shelters and they are, these kits to build them arrived last spring. Um, but um, they've been in storage, uh, while we've tried to get the easements in place in order to have them constructed. And Jim has been so busy um, working on all sorts of other things that um, this is one of those things that didn't get done in time for the construction season. And so those bus shelters are still in storage. And here we are at the time of year when people who ride um, mass transit along Jackson Boulevard would really be um, helped by having those bus shelters in place. Instead, there's, we have another winter where people are having to stand out in the weather on the side of the road, waiting for the bus because we didn't get that particular project complete. Now, that's a real impact on people, on their lives, on the quality of their lives. And um, I think, you know, a very salient example of how if we'd had some extra legal help, we might have been able to spread that work around and not pull uh, Jim away from that particular task. So I, I think there are many examples like that where there are things that um, that uh, that are important to the township, that are important to township residents, and um, that we are not moving forward in the way that we could if we had additional legal support. And that's, that's, you know, that's really the, the, the bottom line for me is, is in terms of bringing on the additional legal muscle from Foster Swift is to get some of these tasks completed and to move us forward.
And I'd like to respond if I could to Kathy?
Yes.
Um, because I've talked with Mike about this, you know, we had an excruciating meeting about this yesterday for hours. Um, and trying to figure out, you know, could we say one or two things we're asking Mike to do? Could we put a cap on the hours? Could we say how work will be just to, um, how work will be assigned? Could we say anything, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's been extremely frustrating to me. And, and, and because I want to um, make sure we're using these resources efficiently when we haven't been, okay? And I think I would ask for David's expertise as he's going through the organization, kinda looking at how we use resources, staff time, our time, consultant time, to also, David, lend an eye as we go forward on how we use attorneys. Um, and I will say Jim, you know, is a star and a champ. And um, just, you know, a dear friend of the township with everything he's done for us. I do think he spends too much time drafting materials that one of us should be drafting. I will say that. He, that's not legal work. I don't think there is much process work left to do. The rules of order have been vetted. There are no legal questions in rules of order. You, somebody may have one or two, but they've, it's been vetted so many times. Um, there aren't big outstanding legal questions, and if there are, illuminate me. The DDA example, Will, we gotta get a real agreement in place to get the DDA to start paying its fair share of legal services and finance services. I don't disagree with you that Jim could use more time, but we need to make sure that the DDA is actually paying their fair share. Just wanna put a, a point in that. What I talked about with Mike last night when we finally had a chance to connect over this holiday week, um, which again, very frustrating, Will, but something that Mike and I came up with as a way that might work is to have work assigned to Foster Swift in a way similar to what we've agreed to do with our township attorney, which is obviously any one of the seven picks up the phone, calls any one of our attorneys anytime about anything. Yes, that would be true for Foster Swift too. However, we would try to streamline the work through the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, or through the administrator, either way. But some central point, because what I fear, and you know, with the trust being so shredded and so low um, between the supervisor and me right now, is I fear, I don't want one of us picking up the phone, giving an attorney some, you know, out of left field legal instruction. I wanna make sure that it's either coming from the seven of us at a meeting, the three of us as a team, or through David, our administrator. But I wanna define the questions. I don't wanna say have, Will pick up the phone and say, Mike, I'd like you to first look at how we can limit public comment, you know, something like that. I wanna make sure that we as a board are using our resources. So I would say, Will, one thing that Mike and I talked about, and I think we can figure out how to do it more efficiently, but I, I do think it's been very good, um, though sometimes painful, to meet as a group as we do Monday mornings to kinda go through things and make sure we go through our list, and Jim's really kinda ticked things off. So I would wonder if we might do something similar with Foster Swift. I don't know that it'd be a meeting, but, but something like that.
Other members of the board? Well, I'd like to invite um, Mike to um, address all of us and, and have an opportunity to speak. And, and uh, Mike, if you wanna uh, take on any of these questions or issues that have been raised, that's, that's welcome.
Sure. Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. Um, and appreciate the fact that I had, didn't have to drive in the snow tonight, so that, that's, that's good as well. But uh, I've, I've spoken to uh, many of you, not all of you, um, about what we do um, in the municipal practice group. Um, like Will said, I am the chairperson of our um, municipal practice group. Um, I've worked um, in municipal law for the past twenty-two years with the firm. Um, and as uh, uh, Trustee Noel had mentioned, I've worked with Sciop Township before um, as well handling uh, litigation matter related to a contentious uh, land division issue. So um, we certainly do have some experience. Um, I'm, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that any of you might have of me. Um, it is true, um, I talked to Clerk Flintoff and said, look, it, it, it's really incumbent upon the township to decide how it wants to assign legal work to my office. And I'm open to a variety of different scenarios and including working with the administrator, as I talked to Mr. Rowley yesterday as well. And so, you know, I, I don't know why it can't be similar to how you assign work to um, Mr. Fink, who I've also talked to um, as well over the last couple of days, who's been um, uh, very helpful. Um, I, my, my role, I, I don't see my role, never did see my role as replacing anything that, that Mr. Fink does or will do for the township. Um, but if I can offer assistance and, and the township needs something done and I'm available to do it, you're free to assign that to me at any time. So um, you know, other than that, I think the engagement letter speaks for itself. Um, we represent um, probably over two hundred different municipal or public clients across the state. Um, I've got several clients in the U.P., several clients in southwest Michigan, southeast Michigan. Um, so from coast to coast and from top to bottom. So um, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm happy to offer, you know, our assistance where the township needs it. Um, I don't think it's any more complicated than that. Um, I will, I will address something else, and I did not know this, the eminent domain issue, I did not know would be an issue. Uh, this is standard language in our engagement letter, right? That we have general counsel work and then specialty counsel work involving certain areas, not only eminent domain, but also environmental issues, labor negotiations, liquor license laws, uh, bonds and public finance work, public-private partnerships, and condemnation in eminent domain. So um, I haven't had any conversations with anybody at the township, including the supervisor, about any eminent domain issues. Uh, again, it's our standard engagement letter, and so, um, you know, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank, thank you. Um, I see a hand raised. Clerk Flintoff?
Thanks. Um, Mike, good to see you. Um, so, so a question about my, my concern I shared with you. Um, I talked with Tom about it before he was out. I talked with Jim about it, with Will and Donna and David. And, and when I brought it up to Jim Monday, and Jim, chime in here if he'd like to, um, I, I said, Jim, you know, what do you think? Tom Mager, May Maher, excuse me, um, who is our township attorney, your colleague with Foster Swift, is representing the township in the Brandt case, as you know. Now, I understand that there must be two processes that will be done before any work would begin. That one, you would have your own internal conflicts check process within Foster Swift. But what Tom told me is, he said, I want, I would make sure, the township should make sure that the insurance company is okay with this. And I started explaining the reason why in my motion to table that failed. Um, you know, because it's a non-monet, the, the Brandt case is seeking non-monetary um, damages. Um, Tokyo Marine, you know, determined they have no duty to defend us. Um, and they say they will reimburse the township for the expenses of the legal defense of the supervisor and the legal defense of the township, but their reservation of rights is expansive. And this is a public document. Reporters have asked for it. We've talked about it. And they said explicitly, and maybe this is standard lingo, but um, from what I understand, it's not so standard, is that, you know, because there could potentially be wrongful acts, um, as defined by the insurance company, they could deny reimbursement of the defense costs. And so that's what makes me nervous. Um, I want to make sure we don't screw up our relationship with our insurance company by entering-
by entering into a general counsel relationship with Foster Swift when Foster Swift is also our litigation defense. So let's imagine the insurance company doesn't cover us for whatever reason. You know, what, what, what do we do? Is there a conflict there? And, and I'm, and Tom told us to get clearance from the insurance company. When I asked Jim, Jim said I would never question Tom. So I'm asking you, Mike, your colleague Tom said we should get this cleared with our insurance company before we enter into an agreement with you. What do you say to us now?
Well, obviously, I, I did not speak with Tom. I only saw the email apparently after the fact. Um, but, um, just as a fundamental matter, I can tell you, your insurance company doesn't decide who you get to hire for legal counsel. Now, what I will also say is that to the extent there is a coverage issue, let's just assume there is a coverage issue, um, because they've, um, issued a reservation of rights. That coverage issue is a contractual matter, right? They're either contractually obligated to provide you a defense and to indemnify you, or they're not, depending on the facts and circumstances of every case. Assume that there would be a coverage issue. We, Foster Swift, could never be involved in that coverage issue because we would be conflicted. Our client, Tom's client, is Scioto Township. My client would be Scioto Township. It would never be in a coverage issue between, say, your insurance carrier and Scioto Township with us, say, taking the position of the insurance carrier, because it would be a conflict of interest for us to do so.
Sure. But, but would we ever be in a position, I guess you would be in a scenario where the insurance co- insurance coverage goes south and the township wants to try to get these costs covered? We would be in a position of needing general counsel to represent us to take on Foster Swift. So that would be a different attorney?
Yeah, you would have to hire somebody else. We, I mean, if, if, for instance, if what you're talking about is, um, and a, a hypothetical where you brought a, uh, malpractice case against Foster Swift, you're certainly not going to turn to Foster Swift to prosecute that case, right? I mean, that, we, we would all be conflicted at that point.
Right.
So you would have to have, either Mr. Fink could do it because he's not conflicted, um, or some other law firm who would take that matter up for the township.
Yeah.
But-
That's all. I just, I just raise it. I think, you know, I, I have no objection to you as an attorney. I have no objection to the firm. It's a very good firm. I, I, I oppose our contracting with the same firm that's providing our litigation defense, um, when, when hopefully this whole litigation matter will be over, you know, pretty soon. So, that's all.
Uh, Mike, it seemed like you had more to say. Would you like to finish your thought?
Well, I, I was just gonna say that it's not a conflict. I mean, to the extent that I understand that, um, the township by virtue of, of Tom Maher's involvement is already a client of the firm.
Correct.
Are there questions from other members of the Board of Trustees for, um, either Mike or for Jim Fink? Um, trustee Noel?
Hi, Mike, and we had a good conversation. Um, I, I asked Mike some specific questions about current i- issues the township is dealing with. One of the issues that we talked about was the fact that Scioto Township has fifteen sets of minutes that are not approved. And I asked him his opinions on this issue and his opinions on the approach the township should take in dealing with this issue. So I can go on, or Mike, maybe you could share with the entire board what you said to me.
Sure. So, um, I view this pretty, um, uh, in a pretty simplistic way, and that's because the Open Meetings Act sort of dictates that. The Open Meetings Act allows you, um, one opportunity to correct the minutes, and that's, um, the meeting after the me- sorry, the meeting after the meeting at which the minutes were taken. That's your one opportunity. You can approve minutes at any time because it's not time restricted. But to correct the minutes, that's your one opportunity to correct them. So I understand, um, just based on conversation, that you have, uh, various sets of minutes that, um, are old, have not been approved, and that you want to get approved. And I also understand that you have endeavored to get transcripts of those, um, meetings. So what, uh, what I would say is, um, take the, um, minutes that have been drafted, attach the transcript to them. They become part of the minutes and approve them. Done. Move on.
Are you saying that legally the township has no authority to correct or amend the minutes after that one meeting when we should have done it?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there case law out there on this?
Yeah, there is. I don't have it at my fingertips, but there is.
Okay. But if we needed it later, we could get it from you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, yes. I mean, I, I think that, I think that the answer is easy. Take the transcript, which you've had prepared, attach it to the minutes, approve the minutes, and be done with it.
Yeah. I think so, too. I mean, I've been thinking about this since we talked, and we have this issue coming up later in our agenda. I hope the board can reflect on what you've said. And thank you.
Sure.
Are there further comments or questions for, um, Mike? Um, trustee Vogel, sorry, I didn't see you up in the corner there.
Don't worry. Um, I'm going to be supportive of this motion. I think there are a number of specific issues, the minutes, OMA, differences of perspective between the supervisor and the clerk, meeting administration. I believe it is exactly someone with a municipal background that can help right the ship, help balance misalignments, help this board be more effective so that we spend less time on administration and process and we spend more time on substantive township issues. Done.
Thank you. Are, are there any other members of the board who would like to comment? Um, seeing none, um, I would like to make the motion um, of-
Will.
To approve retaining Michael Homier and Foster Swift Collins and Smith P.C. as township attorneys and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the engagement agreement. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Corto. So move by Hathaway, support by Corto. Um, before we, uh, call the roll,
Uh, suggest amendment, Will?
Are there members of the public who would like to comment? Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been muted. Sorry.
We got an echo effect, uh-
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I've got too much going on. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Will, I'd like to suggest amendment as, as we talked about. Um, you mentioned not replacing Jim Fink as the township attorney. The motion still says it would be appointing them as the township attorney, capital T, capital A.
Um, it says as, it says as township attorneys, and the motion was drafted by Mr. Fink.
And that motion was drafted before our conversation?
I don't know that that's true, um, but it was drafted by Mr. Fink, and I don't think there's a need to modify it.
I'm, I'm asking for a change to make it clear that we are not confusing this with the appointment of our township attorney.
Well, we refer to our township attorneys, um, all over the place. We have township attorneys who are representing us on various matters. Um, I don't, I don't think that this is really a substantive concern.
Perhaps we could add, add something like, you know, the, the model that he sent from Pittsfield that Donna supported, something, even a word before township attorneys, like, you know, additional or something?
Sure. Why don't we add the word additional township attorneys?
Great. And then the other suggestion would be about how the work comes, like, like Jane just, um, ticked off a nice list of things. And that would go into, you know, a scope of work if there were particular things we all agreed we want Mike to work on.
I don't think, I don't think there's a need to limit ourselves in terms of our flexibility.
If we're not gonna do that, then what I would propose is what Mike and I came to last night is to define the how the work gets assigned. So I would like us in this motion to say it is either through the administrator or through the three of us or through the board as a whole. That is the same as how we do our township attorney work. So that Mike knows, um, if somebody picks up the phone and asks him to do some work, that he knows from us right now that he's authorized to do it, right, Mike?
Yeah, what I would, what I would add to that, though, is something that you had said earlier, which, um, which I also understand to be the case, that that any one of the seven board members can pick up the phone and discuss issues. Now-
Absolutely.
I don't know where we, I don't know where we draw that line between asking issues versus doing work, right? Because depending on the question, right, it could require-
If it gets expensive, it's doing work.
Yeah. So, you know, look, I'm, I'm happy to comply with whatever the township wants to in terms of assigning work. Um, having those clear designations helps both me and you, as long as we're all clear on what it is.
I don't see a need to put this in this motion. We can work out these details with our township administrator later.
Will, we talked about this for three painful hours yesterday, so please don't say you don't see the need for this.
I, just because we had a long contentious meeting yesterday does not mean that somehow we arrived at some conclusion that you are promoting right now. I don't see a need for, um, getting into that kind of clarification in this motion. If there's a need to clarify how we, um, are going to refer work to um, either Mike and his team or any of our township attorneys, we can always do that and, and address that issue at any time.
So I would like to make a, a motion to amend the motion on the table-
I would accept the, the word additional-
The administrator.
I would, I would accept the word additional as a friendly amendment, but I don't accept the other part of this as a friendly amendment.
I made a motion to amend the motion on the table to add that all work be assigned through the administrator. You're supposed to ask if there's a second.
Is there a second? I see no second. I would like to call the roll on the motion as it is amended with the friendly amendment. Um, please call the roll.
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Public comment. Um, are there members of the public who would like to comment before we call the roll on the motion?
First up is Pam Boyd, followed by Kathleen Brandt. Pam?
Thank you. Um, and thank you, Clerk Flintoff. Words have meaning. Trust needs to be rebuilt between this board and the residents. And along those lines, I would argue that the DDA needed to have done a better job in, um, making sure that those shelters, um, got the work done. Uh, I believe, uh, if I'm, I might be incorrect, but the Ann Arbor, uh, Transportation Authority has some responsibility in this. Why are they not doing the, um, the domain issues for where those go? I don't believe that it is fair to put all of that effort on Scioto Township. Um, has anyone asked Mr. Raleigh what he could take on? Um, how many attorneys do you need? Where is the documentation to support this effort that residents could be given, um, a, a better understanding instead of waiting until this gotcha last moment where these things are are presented in a very long board meeting? Um, how many of you studied statute before you ran for your positions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by Gil Christman. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, Scioto Township. Uh, I wanna point out that for months and months, um, residents have been reading statute to this board. We have re- read the exact statute for OMA that you just agreed with Mr. Homier is appropriate. We've been saying that for months. We've also been reading other statute. We are very well-versed and very knowledgeable, and we will do our research. Now, I wanna do, share with you some more information because I think some of you board members don't read any of this stuff. This is the procurement policy. Starting on page four, item number three, procurement policy. It talks about uh, dollar amounts and processes. So, uh, item, item number E, page five, I'm sorry, F, purchases twenty thousand dollars and above. All contracts, purchases, purchases estimated to exceed twenty thousand dollars shall require formal competition as deemed appropriate, including not limited, limited to competitive sealed bids, requests for proposals, quality-based selections, negotiated purchases. Uh, further, it said the bid procedures. There's an invitation for bids required, public notice, bid opening, bid acceptance, bid evaluation, correction and withdrawal, and then finally awards. So you folks don't read policy, but we do, and I wanna share another point here, which says failure to follow policy. The township shall not be responsible for the costs of goods and services ordered or purchased by any township official or employee that are not obtained in accordance with this policy. Contracts negotiated outside this policy will be considered invalid and non-binding. So let's follow up to what, uh, the clerk is asking, is that you have a procedure to have board approval to engage with Foster Swift. Um, residents are-
Thirty seconds.
I guess, really wish you guys wouldn't do that. It's so annoying. The planning commission doesn't call out thirty seconds. All right, I'm continuing. So residents will take action. I've told you this before. If you continue to do this, and if Mr. Hathaway perhaps should pick up the call, the phone and pit, and talk to Mr. Homier and nego- and ask for services that are built to, uh, the township. I guarantee you residents are not gonna be happy with that, and as you see, we will take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by resident. Pam?
No, I already spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've, this is what happens when I do too many things at once. Next up is resident, followed by Gil Christman. Resident?
Hi there, this is Margie Knapp again. Um, I wanted to just make a couple of quick comments here. Um, I thought it was interesting watching the deliberation that trustee Noel had asked, um, Mr. Homier, I don't know if I said your name correctly, apologies if not, um, for a legal opinion or an opinion about the minutes, and seemed satisfied with the advice given. um for a legal opinion or an opinion about the minutes and seemed satisfied with the advice given, which I would expect right now that she was doing with Attorney Think, who's the current trust township lawyer. Um, and so that leads me to wonder if uh perhaps there isn't a need for another township attorney as we seem to be already looking for outside opinions from uh attorneys that we are considering hiring. Um, and I've heard in several meetings that I have watched recently um and in actually several of the draft minutes, a specific request for Attorney Think to um offer an opinion or speak up at different times and various meetings. Um, and not seen um responses that that um any response in several instances. Um, and so both of those two points concern me, and as a resident, we need to believe that uh a different type of attorney might better suit our township needs at this point in time. And so from my res- my residential perspective, I would support hiring um a new attorney to augment the staff um at the township. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Next up is Jillian Carey, followed by Gil Christman. Jillian?
Yes, thank you. Um. Did I hear that correctly, that you are not going to have details for the attorney agreement? And what the attorney, this new attorney's um going to do? Because did I hear that correctly? You're gonna do that later, or I mean, it seems like even um.
It is the proposal in the packet, the detailed proposal in the packet.
Okay, okay. Well, I just heard some arguing about, no, we don't need to clarify anything, so I wasn't sure if that was just being blown off, because I know that anybody that would hire an attorney on their individual um case or personal case would want all those details. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Next up is Gil Christman. Gil? Gil Christman?
I see. Sorry, I didn't unmute at time, Lisa. Um, I wanted to follow up, please, if I may. Trustees Knowles um put a reminder to the board that the appropriate procedure has been and always been to acquire bids, and that seems to be ignored where we're kind of having the board rush to making a determination of um taking on this um firm uh as added attorney for the township. And then um it's it seems somewhat um premature that any consideration, uh as Jessica had said, has not been done to document specifically what is the job description and need for this other attorney? And to have that before you even vote on accepting the township accepting this. And then, thirdly, it seemed somewhat financially um unsound to say we have the means to financially support another firm, but yet it was noted that the budget is that now sixty-five thousand spent out of a seventy thousand budget, and that's five thousand for the remaining four months with only uh without considering the Gelman um pollution issue as being needed further um legal counsel. So it doesn't seem that our township fund is um appropriately um able to support another legal firm, um especially when it's done in such a carte blanche, non-specified manner. Um, I, I don't know, I wouldn't hire somebody without having a very specific um understanding of what their role was that was being contracted, and I wouldn't think a company law firm would want to engage in a contract when it's been made known that there's in this fiscal year, not really the means to pay them to come right on board. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gil. Um, that's all the public comment. Well, I wanted to respond to one point of information. Um, the one, one point on legal advice generally, so that the public understands is Jim Think, any township attorney, the legal advice that they provide one or more of us may be kept confidential and privileged by any one of us. So I would say certainly with what you see, if you see some legal advice being delivered publicly and some legal advice being delivered privately, certainly the public doesn't have a clear view of what legal advice has been has or has not been delivered. Um, so I want to make that clear, because I do think it becomes um confusing in public. Second of all, you know, we do have about five thousand dollars left in this line item in the budget. Um, we're certainly gonna go over. I don't know, Mike, if that's, you know, about ten hours of your time. Um, and and I'm sure well worth it, and if this goes through, I look forward to working with you. Um, but but this board really needs to look at how we use our attorney time. I want to emphasize something I brought up privately. We have a local government expert in David Rowley. Um, we have a fully vetted legal um draft of our rules of order. We have gotten a lot of legal advice from our township attorney, um who's very good. And I don't expect Michael's advice to be much different than what we've already heard. So um again, for that reason, and really because I'm I'm concerned about the cost of this, um, I will not be supporting this at this juncture. I wish the board would be willing to wait a week for Tom Maher to get back and for the insurance company to get back to us. Um, I would support it if we had a budget and if I had certainty that the legal fees for the Brandt case weren't going to fall on the backs of our residents. That's all.
The motion is um to approve retaining Michael Homier and Foster Swift Collins and Smith B.C. as additional township attorneys and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign the engagement agreement. Please call the roll.
Will, I had a comment in response.
To, well, at this point, is it a comment in response to a point of fact with the public comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, couple members commented on the process, and I'm not happy with the process that's been used here. However, I have previous experience working with this firm, and they did an excellent job in the past. So I'm assuming they would also do an excellent job at this time. Um, this letter of engagement, as I understand it, is a pretty standard letter of engagement. And as I understand the terms, the township can terminate at any time. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So there are some checks and balances in place. And I will be supporting this.
Are there any other board members who would like um a a final comment before we call the roll? Seeing none, please call the roll on the motion.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
No. Flintoff? No. Quatow?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mike, are you gonna stick around for our next agenda item for a minute?
I wasn't planning on it, but if you'd like me to, I'm.
Please.
I don't think my.
Ten minutes.
I don't think my advice is gonna change, but happy to do so.
People might have questions.
All right.
But off the clock.
We we haven't signed the letter yet, so I don't know.
Yeah, don't sign the letter until tomorrow. You won't see a bill for today.
Okay, well, that brings us uh to uh the next agenda item, uh which is approval of minutes, and um as uh we know, we have quite a few of them. I sent out uh to assist with this um item on the agenda. I sent out to board members some specific model motions. Um, these um were worked on um in in part during the lengthy meeting that uh yesterday that has been referenced earlier. Um, and um and also um sort of hammered out in in detail after. Um, so I'm I'm hopeful that we can use these as sort of a guide to get us through this process as quickly as possible. Um, I'm I'd like to begin um with the first um item, uh which is item J one. And that's the um minutes from the draft minutes from the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Um, are there any, and and the process that I would like to go through is the one that was recommended actually by our township administrator and um and and David, you can speak up if you wanna um clarify or confirm or whatever, um but my understanding is that um we're looking in particular for what you've termed sort of OMA corrections. So um those would include things like, um, did we get the count on the votes correct? Did we um um uh get the attendance correct? Um, and so on, sort of um matters of fact that um um are sort of the requirements um under the OMA. Am I interpreting your advice to us correctly, David?
Yeah, basically, if if you um recall the conversation from the from the last board meeting two weeks ago, uh the recommendation uh and the board a- adopted the 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 motion to approve uh having uh several of the meetings transcribed. Two of those transcriptions are available for you. Uh I believe it's August seventeenth and August twenty-fourth. Um, and the the intent was to uh clean up the backlog of minutes that were there, uh provide transcriptions for those uh uh regular meetings or special meetings that that was appropriate to do that. Um, to, as I said, two of those are available. Uh, the several other sets are still uh being processed by the court reporter, and my understanding is those will be developed, or I'm sorry, delivered uh uh sometime in January when the court reporter is finished, is finished with the work. Um, so the the suggestion, the recommendation was uh to look to the OMA uh and make your, make any, make sure that the minutes were in compliance with that and attach the transcript as a um uh record uh of those of those meetings. Um, no other changes were recommended. Um, uh so that was the the original intent. Um, you know, as as the clerk mentioned, I've I've spent my career in government, but just for the record, I am not an attorney. So do not look to me for legal advice. I will not give that. Uh, but I will offer opinion on on government uh and do my best to uh to serve the residents here that I possibly can. And this is an attempt to try and keep us in compliance with the act uh and con- uh conclude the backlog of the minutes and develop a process uh uh in January going forward. Uh, so we don't have to have uh this kind of conversation. Again, we'll have uh an agreement on on format or whatever it is that the board wants to do going forward, but there will be some policy recommendation coming forward in in the near future. Uh, but um uh as it stands now, this this is what we have. Uh, and uh it has been discussed um with with um uh a- a- and and with respect to our attorneys, I will call him Mike. Uh, we uh uh I don't pronounce the last name very well, so I'll stay with that. Um, I'd not discussed it specifically with Mike. I have discussed this process with uh with Jim Think, our our other township attorney, so uh that's that's the suggestion at this point.
David, just to clarify, you're suggesting what Mike has suggested also.
We would, I I would say if I understood him correctly, yes.
Essentially, we do not change these minutes, but we attach the transcript to the minutes.
The transcript would be attached to the minutes. The the only thing that I would say was a different suggestion um was that I was saying that the only changes that I thought would be appropriate were those to make compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Um, now, I would I would defer to to Mike if he wanted to offer any additional. Um, if I understood him correctly, even that might not be possible at this point if it's
Yeah.
passed, if it's passed the the actual meeting. Uh, we might, we might just have to adopt as presented with the attachments of the of the transcript. Um.
If I may, you know, the the part of the reason I, sorry?
I I was just calling on you, Clerk Flintoff. Please go ahead.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. Um, you know, I, you know, you know, part of my special frustration around the seventeenth is because, you know, the proceedings are the subject of a lawsuit against the township. So I'm glad that we're finally addressing this. Um, and I guess with the minutes as the whole, you know, I'd I'd always known that that was probably true. I don't know if it's true, and I wasn't gonna take it to court. Um, that we couldn't amend after that meeting, so it's interesting to hear Mike say that. I think it's not that anybody's legal advice is right or wrong. Um, I think that part of the role of a township attorney is to be a counselor as well as an attorney. And I think that in some of the counseling um from our township attorney and our township administrator, it's also just trying to get us collectively to get our act together in however that's gonna look. So I would say I interpret attaching the transcript as an amendment to the minutes, and we talked at length about what is part of the minutes, what is not. Um, you know, all of the discussions about the video records. Certainly, everything's a public record. What's a permanent record? What's a temporary record? All of this stuff. Um, some are legal questions and some are just, you know, geeky clerkie questions that I have to worry about. Um, but I guess my question for Mike is, Mike, is attaching the transcript as part of the minutes, in fact, an amendment? Because this is what I was gonna put, you know, in the binder, in the basement, was the whole transcript with the minutes and the permanent records that we have, you know, from the twenties for- forward. So, Mike, is attaching the transcript an amendment? And in your view, is that not allowed right now?
Oh, so I want to use precise language here because the statute doesn't talk about amendments. It talks about corrections. And so I don't view attaching um a recorded um uh transcript of the actual meeting to be a correction to the minutes. So I would, that's why, you know, I think that attaching it to the uh set of minutes that the draft set of minutes is not a correction. It's simply including a uh transcript of the recording as part and parcel of the minutes themselves. There's additional case law out there. I can dig it up if you want, where there was a um there was a uh recording made um of a meeting. Um, and it was a surreptitious recording of a closed session, and what the court ultimately concluded was that that recording also constituted part of the minutes of the meeting. And so I think the court um has in prior cases uh found that recordings um are in fact part of the minutes of the meeting as long as they are retained pursuant to a retention schedule um or and policy, right? Because there's two different kinds of recordings. Uh, one, one which you can simply record over, you know, if you use them simply to construct the minutes. And two, there is that version uh of a recording that is retained by the township as part of the official record. And so that's why I view this pretty simplistically, which is, I think you could get through all of these um uh draft minutes by simply um taking the transcript that you've already had prepared, attaching it to the minutes, which is not a correction, approving them and being done with them.
But with that in mind, um and and being mindful of our goal of trying to uh keep this meeting as brief as possible, uh rather than get into further discussions about um how the 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 history and background of how we got to this point, um I would like to move forward with resolving the. Um, I would like to move forward with resolving the approval of the minutes, and so. Um, my own reading of the minutes from August seventeenth, I did not find anything. Um, that rose to the level of um what um we described as an O M A correction.
Anything incorrect.
Yeah, anything, yes, anything that requires a correction. Um, and therefore I would um move the model motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting. Of eight seventeen twenty one. As presented with the attached transcript of that meeting prepared on twelve eighteen twenty one. By Modern Court Reporting and Video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes. And a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the eight seventeen twenty one meeting is available at sciotownship dot O R D. And shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, unquote. Is there support?
No support.
Support by Palmer, so move by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Please call a roll.
Public comment?
Um, not on approval of minutes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
That brings us to um the next item, which is J two. This is the draft minutes for uh the meeting of August twenty fourth. Now, this is the regular meeting following the meeting that we just approved. Unless someone else would like to make the motion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. The minutes of the regular meeting of eight twenty four twenty one as presented. With the attached transcript of that meeting prepared on twelve twenty twenty one. By Modern Court Reporting and Video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes and a banner atop the minutes. Quote, the video recording of the eight twenty four twenty one meeting is available at sciotownship dot O R D. And shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, unquote. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Noel, move by Hathaway, support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next item is item J three. Uh, these are the minutes, the draft minutes for our regular meeting of September fourteenth. I again did not find any um.
I have an amendment.
Oh, you do, all right.
Yeah, I I've had it on the cover sheet since I first presented these. A mistake I made.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I overlooked that.
Um, page three. Um, first of all, there's just an area that's highlighted, I will un-highlight. Second of all, I had. I I had copied and pasted my notes in full and not edited it. Um, and so here is the edit, the top line as clerk, it's the clerk's report. That looks extraordinarily long. Um, because I pasted my speaking points, so here are my proposed edits. As clerk comma Flintoff. Strike, all the way to. Said that treasurer supervisor clerk, finance manager and H R consultant. Held the draft meeting with Plant Moran on August twenty sixth. Strike the next sentence, special thanks to Pittsfield Township Finance Director who is generously stepping in to provide coaching and second pair of eyes. For our finance manager. Um, our our finance manager needs to complete the work on time, strike the rest. Pick up that as treasurer. That's all.
Okay, well, I'm I'm, since you are the person who is taking notes, I will trust that you got all of that.
I do have all of that.
And are there any other corrections for these minutes? I see none. Um, would someone else like to make the motion, or shall I proceed? I'll go ahead, to to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of nine fourteen twenty one. As amended by the Board of Trustees. On December twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. With the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by Modern Court Reporting and Video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes. And a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the nine fourteen twenty one meeting is available at sciotownship dot O R G and shall be retained. As provided by state law and township policy, unquote. Is there support? Support by Vogel, so move by Hathaway, support by Vogel. Please call a roll.
Way?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
All right, for this next one, bear with me, I'm going to group together all of the special meetings. Because I read through them and I found no um need for corrections. Um, and I think we can just do them as a group. So this would be item, agenda items, J four, J five, J six, J seven, J nine, J eleven, J twelve. So the motion is to approve the minutes of the special meetings of nine twenty one twenty one. Nine twenty two twenty one. Nine twenty three twenty one, nine twenty seven twenty one. Ten six twenty one, ten twenty two twenty one. And ten twenty five twenty one as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Noel, so move by Hathaway, support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Excuse me, one moment. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
So this, of course, moves us a little bit out of order on the agenda, but item J eight. Um, is the next um set of minutes, um this would be the minutes of um September twenty eighth. Um, and.
I have a proposed amendment.
Okay. Proceed.
Mine's on um page three, Jackie. I had um the motion and I went through it twice. I did put all of that in as your original motion. That was then amended and wasn't sure if I had included. Too much as the motion, or if you were comfortable with all of that being as the motion.
Oops.
Thank you, Clerk Flintoff, I I could you, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time tracking pages, could you please let me know what page of the packet you're referring to?
Absolutely, it's on page four hundred and seventy four of the packet. And it's the regular meeting of September twenty eighth. It's page three of those minutes, four hundred and seventy four. And it's under F approval of the minutes. And there was a motion by Corteau to table consideration of the draft minutes. Of August seventeenth, August twenty four and September fourteenth for further review. Due to serious concerns about if recent minutes have been true, complete and correct. And you you went on to describe that there have been several instances. And I I um.
Thank you.
At the end, you had also, you said as well as to make a motion that the Zoom transcription be enabled. And so there were a couple of motions rolled into one, so I erred on the side of including it all. Um, which I'm happy to keep as is, I just want to acknowledge. Um, just wanted to ask you if if that was correct.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I had intended there to be the two simpler motions with some comments in between. Um, but I'm also mindful that since I had not. Corrected that on the next meeting, that if it stands the way it is, that's also fine.
Well, no, we're correcting it right now, we're making changes right now.
And I would say to to. Unbold after, on the third line, the the word correct, the the part. From that there have been, that is not part of the motion, that was simply my commentary. And then, so you could not have that as the motion and then resume with. And I would like to make a motion in the fourth or fifth line uh from the bottom of that paragraph.
That's better, so I will unbold. Um, between them and mark that change, Kathy and others, as a reminder, the, it is. All the changes are are marked in the approved. Minutes.
Thank you, I I appreciate you flagging that.
Okay, I just, I have a question here, Jess, I thought that. We were just given an opinion that we really have no authority. To be amending anything in the minutes right now.
Yeah, that's true, Kathy, I don't know what to do with that opinion, um, we did just get that. I mean, we also just did an amendment on September fourteenth.
I know.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't think what we're doing is is kosher, but if it makes people feel better. Um, I I'm happy to do it.
It's certainly consist, it's certainly consistent with past practice, um, you know, the the prior Board of Trustees. Approved um twenty three sets of minutes in November twenty twenty and made corrections to them. Despite the fact that they were doing, you know, um. Corrections to minutes that had, for meetings that had occurred months earlier, so. It's it's, there's a there's certainly a precedent for doing this.
A bad precedent.
Yeah, the prior, since I was on the prior board, I can speak to this, the prior board. Had not been informed by legal counsel. That it was not advisable to do that. So tonight, we've gotten an opinion from Mike Homier and. I think it it's an authoritative opinion, I think we should follow his recommendations.
Okay, so we wouldn't make the action that we took. On the fourteenth then, I'm sorry, I'm just asking for clarity, Kathy, you're saying on J three, those as amended?
I I thought he said we had no authority to amend these minutes. Unless it was the last meeting. I mean, we're, we we get the the December fourteenth minutes, we can amend those. Because that was our last meeting, but for the other ones, I I thought he said we had no authority to do that.
But we're gonna get into a problem in a couple of um meetings because there's some significant O M A issues. That need to be corrected.
I'd like to ask Jim Fink, who is currently our attorney and is not being replaced and. Jim, I don't include your full long answers in the draft minutes. Because I think it's kind for me to not do that, just like I don't include every thing staff people say. But just so you know, it's from a good place, Jim, what should we do right now?
I I think everyone understands I'm formulating my answer.
Take your time.
Is Mike still here?
Mike is still here, um. A- as the clerk mentioned earlier, um, I had said something along the lines of I don't disagree with. Tom Maher, Mr. Maher, and I sometimes discuss issues and come to a resolution. And I'm not. With. The exact same advice that Mr. Homier gave tonight, I'm not disagreeing with him because. I would want to spend some time on it, one of the. Public comments was about my reluctance to give uh on the fly legal advice and um so on this one. Um. Recognizing that a very competent attorney who focuses um all solely on municipal law has said. You can't make the corrections, I I think um. Had we not had that advice tonight, I would tell you that you could make those amendments, I would suggest that you make those amendments tonight. And if the board needs to take um successive action later to. Amend the action taken tonight, you could do that, and Mr. Homier and I will discuss that before your next board meeting.
So Jim, the, because already in this proposal, as we get down. You know, there there's successive action that will already have to happen with these minutes, what I might. Suggest to my colleagues, given your advice here, Jim. Is to take Mr. Homier's advice for now. Of not amending, and we'll have to go back, Will, and redo the motion on J three. But not amending. And I think if we need to go back, successively go back and make amendments. When we incorporate the transcripts. Process wise, that is simpler than making amendments now and undoing amendments. When our township attorneys can get in the, get, get a chance to talk.
Well, one, if I may um interject, one. Um, sort of additional step that we might take. Um, is to make a record in the minutes for this meeting of. Of changes or corrections that we um notice um in our review of these minutes and sort of make a record of it. At least in the agenda, in the minutes from this meeting of the of twelve twenty eight. So that we have a record. That these changes or these corrections um were noted by the board. Um, but um, you know, not um incorporate them into these draft minutes, and that way we'll have. Made a record of them um by the board. I mean, that would be one way of sort of capturing them and making a record of them, even if we can't um um according to the advice of um counsel. Make make those changes at this point in time.
Will, one one note on that as as clerk is, I know that it's going to be a couple of months before this comes back. I would just suggest that we um hold off. On that, it would be easier to, you know, by the time we revisit this in a couple of months. We're gonna have to run through what those changes are anyways in the successive action, I would think. So it's it's, I think it's a time saver to. Hold off if that's the direction we want to go, but.
I I'm worried that we we won't have um a record traveling. With, in in any way with the minutes, and we're about to approve. These minutes, I would, I would suggest that at least in one case, it makes sense to make a note of it in in our discussion of. Of the minutes as we approve them.
Well, I, guys, could we ask Mike his opinion on this?
Yeah. He's here and I keep asking him to start his video.
That's okay, he doesn't want to, he doesn't have to.
Uh, no, I, look. I, I am, I, you know, look, I I'm not your attorney yet, I I respect Jim's opinion as well, I just don't find any authority for making corrections. After that um, after that meeting at which they were taken, um, there are.
Yeah, I agree.
And there there are several articles that have also been written, I I just, um, I was looking for the case law and can't put my finger on it right at the se- at the second. Um, but but I'm happy to talk with uh Jim about it and and come to a a decision on it, I just don't think there's authority under the act to make corrections. Uh, later than that first meeting after which they were taken.
Will, Jane has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
So. So it seems like. We're making something pretty simple more complicated. We've got advice from a municipal attorney saying we can't make corrections to minutes. We've got advice from a municipal attorney saying we can't make corrections to minutes beyond. Meeting after which. They reflect. By attaching the transcript, we are attaching a complete, accurate and unbiased record of the meeting. It stands. As the correct record. If there are discrepancies, there are discrepancies. But we are beyond the window where we can make corrections. So I think what we're engaged in right now is approving minutes as presented. With transcripts attached. To be recognized as the approved record for that meeting.
I wanna piggyback on something.
One second, Mike, is that a fair summary?
That's a fair summary.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a fair summary. Um. So I I just, yeah, I think it's, I think to to the extent that you attach a transcript to it, um it will constitute the full minutes. And so you can parse through um not only the draft portion, but the actual transcript and and then make that determination. So. But I'll let the board decide that.
Mike, to piggyback on what Jane said, I just wanna verify. And I know I I always flip flop between the words amend and correct and you're telling me the statute says correct, right?
The statute, um, the statute talks in terms of corrections. That's that's correct.
So what gives us the authority to attach the transcript? Cause I was thinking of what we had a long conversation about this, you know, yesterday was. You know, by making the train and why it wasn't the video, which is a temporary record. You know, why it was the hard copy transcript as a permanent record and I wanted to make sure whatever we had was a permanent record that could. Really become part of the official minutes. So. Tell me what gives us the authority, Mike, to attach. A transcript and incorporate it as part of the minutes.
So there, like I said, there is a case out there that construed a recording of a meeting to be part and parcel as the minutes of that meeting. And so what you're doing is simply including minutes attached to other minutes and incorporating those as the. Minutes of that meeting.
Gotcha.
But I don't view the attachment of a transcript of a recorded version of the meeting to be a correction.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I I I think having gone through these minutes. And looked looking closely for the kinds of corrections um or anything that needed correcting. That would sort of rise to the level of what um our township administrator calls an OMA correction. I I don't think that we're really, um, there's gonna be that big of an issue with most of these sets of minutes. However, we are about to get to one where I think there is a question of what to do. So why don't we proceed? And then when we get to that, then we can sort of talk about it instead of talking about hypotheticals. I think that will be. More constructive.
I think we're on the minutes of September twenty eighth, so.
Did we not finish those?
No, we haven't. Uh, so given. The. We haven't voted on those.
I thought the motion had been made, hadn't it?
Nope.
No, all right. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of nine twenty eight twenty one. As presented. With the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by Modern Court Reporting and Video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes. In a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the nine twenty eight twenty one meeting is available at siotownship dot org. And shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy.
Now support.
So move by Hathaway, support by Palmer.
And one comment, which I made to Will earlier today, I wanna make it publicly. Is, you know, we're in the middle of the implementation of the video component and once we get that up, these future video recordings. Will be up within the next four weeks. Um, a couple of these are not up right now, so just to be clear.
Don't run right to the website and expect to see the video right away.
Right, and then sue me.
Okay, um, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome has left the meeting. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Will, I would ask that we go back to um J three if we could, because we adopted those as amendments. And we should um go back and and just adopt them as presented.
Okay, so how do you undo the motion? Do we just make the motion again and sort of override the prior motion?
Jim?
Anyone who voted for the motion can ask the board to reconsider it.
I'd like to ask the board to reconsider our motion J three to approve the nine fourteen minutes as amended.
Do we need a a second for a motion to reconsider?
Can I ask a question, please?
Um, yes, uh trustee Corto.
I wonder if we could get attorney think to weigh in on if we already took that vote, even though that is not really the authority that we're. Saying that we have, but once we've taken the vote, isn't that a matter of we would have to come up with a new motion and a. A new vote, like, can we just move on?
But you you do a motion for reconsideration. And you reconsider that vote, um which if that motion for reconsideration is successful, then you would. Take a different vote on the action after the motion for reconsideration.
But if but if we don't reconsider.
I said reconsideration three times in one sentence.
That's very considerate of you. If if we don't reconsider the motion and we have made that motion to correct, even though. The which has been standard practice of the board in the past, but it we are discovering tonight is not standard practice. But if we don't revisit that motion, will it stand? Even though it wasn't. In some sense, fully compliant.
See, Corto, I mean, maybe you didn't. Hear reluctance in suggesting that I might have a little bit different view than Mr. Homier does on this. Um, so. I'm trying to avoid answering that question, but you. You've taken a vote. If you didn't do anything, then your action stands, whether it's appropriate or not, until it's challenged.
Right. And I would offer with the thousands of hours and dollars that we're spending on this project, that we're in the same meeting right here, right now. With this legal advice that's been given to us and we're adopting, I I would suggest, Jackie, it's appropriate to reconsider and just get this done.
So.
Trustee Vogel.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Well, I think the motion's been made. Would you like to second the motion?
Sure.
So motion by um clerk Flintoff, support by trustee Vogel. Uh, to reconsider our prior vote on agenda item J three. Uh, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of nine fourteen twenty one. Guess we just called a roll. Um, so first we're first we're voting to reconsider and then we will need to vote again on a on a new motion. Um, that will word at that time. All right, um, please call a roll on the motion to reconsider.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of nine fourteen twenty one. As presented with the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by modern court. Reporting and video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes and a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the nine fourteen twenty one meeting is available. At siotownship dot org and shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, end quote.
Support.
Support.
So um, move by Flintoff, support by. Um, either Hathaway or Palmer, whoever.
Tell me one.
And please call a roll.
All right, Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So that brings us back to item J ten, is that correct? Um, okay, so so that that is the minutes of ten twelve. Twenty-one, a regular meeting. Um, and um, the motion then would be to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of ten twelve twenty-one as presented. With the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by modern court reporting and video LLC Incorporated as part of those minutes. In a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the ten twelve twenty one meeting is available at siotownship dot org. And shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, unquote. Is there a support? Support by Vogel. So move by Hathaway, support by Vogel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh.
Okay, well, can I offer an observation?
Sure.
Since we are agreeing that we are not correcting minutes and we are basically now doing exactly the same step. On each set of minutes, could we bundle the last three into one motion?
Well, I thought about this and the difficulty is that the motions um contain specificity about the minutes. So there's a reference. In the motions.
There's only three to go. Let's do it.
Well, except that this this next one is the one that presents the challenge because it contains substantive errors. Um, that somehow need to be addressed. And what I would propose is that. Um, we somehow capture these in the minutes of this meeting so that we have. Um, acknowledged them and sort of made a record of acknowledging them. And if we figure out a way to fix them some other way later, we can we can do that as well. And the in this is why um, the vote tallies are wrong. Um, throughout these minutes because um, they count um, the the people who are absent. As no votes. So um, there are on pages.
Are you on, Will? I wanna get the corrections.
Sure, page, page two. At the top, there's a mo, it says the motion passed five to two. It actually passed five to zero. With two people absent. And and I mean, it was consistent, though. I mean, it's it that we had unanimous votes throughout this. Set of the of minutes throughout this meeting, we had unanimous votes, but they are reflected in the minutes as five two votes.
Cause that got screwed up between the two absent and the two no.
Yeah, and and but you were consistent, you know.
Yep.
So um, it's, it it appears on on almost every page from page two through. Page seven. And then um, and then the votes sort of varied and 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 it got back on track. So somehow um. But we need to sort of make a record of the fact that these votes are sort of.
Well, this comment will appear in these minutes here of this meeting, but I don't think that, you know, to be consistent. I think we need to um approve these as presented.
Well, I that's I I I hear that and I saw this coming. I'm just trying to figure out how we could make some record and I think you've just. Sort of put your finger on it. Um, so with that in mind, um. Would someone like to make the motion for um, these this set of minutes? This would be item J thirteen on the agenda. No one? All right, I'll go ahead. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting of ten twenty six twenty one. As presented with the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by modern court reporting and video LLC. Incorporated as part of those minutes and a banner atop the minutes. Quote, the video recording of the ten twenty six twenty one meeting is available at siotownship dot org. And shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, un unquote. Is there a support?
Support.
So move by Hathaway, support by Palmer.
Could I offer a friendly amendment or perhaps a question? Could we in the motion? Make a reference to the minutes for today? As offering a correction on vote tallies within those minutes or some way of flagging?
Yeah, I I was thinking exactly the same thing.
Oh, that's a good idea. Well, how would you offer a friendly amendment to that effect?
Well, I would accept that as the second, then you would have to accept it, Will.
Sure, I mean, we would, you and I would have to accept it, but how are we going, how are we going to incorporate it into the motion?
So I think it.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, interrupted.
And with a at the end of that statement that you read, say, and with the further. Update and correction noted in the minutes of the December twenty eighth. Twenty twenty one meeting.
With the. Say, can you say that again, the the?
With the further. Correction noted in the minutes of the December twenty eighth. Twenty twenty one meeting. Uh, yeah. Board of Trustees meeting.
Okay. So that would go in within the banner atop the minutes after, this would be added after the word policy?
I wasn't sure it needed to go in the banner or simply be part of the motion after that final statement. So it would be a further part of the motion.
Oh, so maybe maybe af- after, maybe inserting this language.
Either before, it could even be at the top of the motion.
So maybe after, as presented? And with the further correct correction, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, maybe that's, that's the logical place to put it. You're right.
Okay, I I I misunderstood where you were saying to put it.
And well, I, that's where I said to put it. You didn't misunderstand. I just didn't come up with the best place.
Okay, would, does that work? Um, clerk Flintoff? Did you capture, do you feel like you captured it adequately?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So with 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 that friendly amendment to the motion. Um, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Brings us to item J fourteen. Um, these are the minutes of our regular meeting on November twenty third. Um, the motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of eleven twenty three twenty one. As presented with the intent to attach a transcript of that meeting to be prepared by modern court reporting and video LLC. Incorporated as part of those minutes and a banner atop the minutes, quote, the video recording of the eleven twenty three twenty one meeting. Is available at siotownship dot org and shall be retained as provided by state law and township policy, unquote. Is there a support?
Support.
Okay.
Jane, give it to Jane.
Move by Hathaway, support by Vogel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Corto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh.
That brings us to the final uh set of minutes. These are from our most recent meeting, so um, they are fair game. Um, as we now know for correction. Um, I went through them and I didn't find anything that really rose to the level of what um, David um. Terms OMA correction, but if any, if anyone else. But if any, if anyone else did, then this is the moment.
I assume everybody would go through them, this is the practice we need to get into and do them at the top of the meeting.
I don't see any other corrections being offered, um, so.
I saw no corrections.
So the, the motion to, would be to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of twelve, fourteen, twenty-one, as presented. Is there a support?
I'll support.
Okay, so move by Hathaway, support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Can I, can I just ask a question or make a comment briefly?
Sure.
I, I, I want to say that although I did not see any corrections of the type described as the administrator as an OMA correction in vote totals, I am disappointed that the minutes do not respond to the, to the style of minutes described by the administrator and requested by trustee Jerome in our last meeting and in recent weeks to streamline the minutes, to focus on OMA requirements, to allow for more efficient review and approval. And I, I, along with that, I'm not sure why trustee Jerome's communication was not included in the, the communications to the board, so I would simply respectfully request that we return to the style of minutes that were produced a, a year ago, um that were streamlined minutes that can be more uh easily gone through and approved.
Thank you. Um, one protocol is if a member of the board requests that a communication be included in the packet, I include it, otherwise I don't. Um, so he didn't. Otherwise I would have. Um, two, um, we had this conversation after the board um, on July thirteenth, um, made the edits to the negative public comment of June twenty-second. And I've said this before, um, it's, it's no secret, my frustration um, at um, some of my colleagues um intolerance for negative public comment. I really believe strongly in free speech, particularly in the right of the public to criticize the government. That's us. And whereas maybe a year ago, I was welcoming suggestions about the style of minutes I present in draft form to you. I think I was very clear in rules of order, and since July thirteenth, that I have not been open-minded about returning to short-form minutes until this board resolves approval of minutes as well as um including um public comment, I think it's important, and so all I can say is it's a outstanding disagreement.
Thank you, are, are there, unless there are further comments, um, please call the roll.
Oh, I had a question.
Sure.
What is the total expected cost of these transcripts that we will be doing?
Um, the estimated cost, I don't have it right.
December fourteenth minutes.
Pardon?
Is that still correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Is that estimate still correct?
The estimate um what was adjusted based on the invoice that we received for the two um transcripts that we have in hand. Um, I um had some communication with the um head of the, um, I'm not sure what her title is, the, the person um at um Modern Court Reporting, and um we came up with kind of a guesstimate, and um I don't have it in front of me, but David, I should, I shared it with you, I think it was just over six thousand dollars for the total cost for all of, all of the transcripts. All seven of the meetings.
Yes, if I may, the, the, the motion that was approved by the board was a not to exceed, I believe it was eighty-five hundred dollars.
Eighty-five hundred.
And the estimate uh based on what the um transcripts came in at, and the estimate with the rest is, I, I think it was like sixty-two, was somewhere in that range, was just a little over six. Um, and just, just one other comment, if I may, the, the suggestion and the recommendation for transcripts was for the backlog, that is not a recommendation going forward. That the transcription concept is finished, in my view, uh with the, with the cleanup of the past minutes. And then the board can decide its policy going forward.
How much did the first two transcripts cost?
Oh, gosh. Can I get back to you on that? I don't have it in, I don't have those things in front of me, I think it was, it was, you know, somewhere over a thousand dollars for the um first two transcripts, um, and then um that gave them some information um that they were able to give us a better estimate for the, the remaining five um transcripts.
Okay. Thank you. And a process point to kind of close the loop here is, you know, so in, in the next meeting, when we do our regular cleanup budget amendments, this is one of the several ones you'll see, right, this authorization we did of eighty-five hundred. Um, we'll do a cleanup budget amendment because this was unbudgeted. So just to kind of close that loop of the cycle and why we do those cleanup budget amendments.
So now, with all of these comments, I've kind of lost track, are we still in need of calling the roll?
Yes.
Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Palmer, you're on mute?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Quarto?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
That concludes um the approval of the minutes, um and brings us to public comment, and this is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And I see some hands raised, um Clerk Flintoff, will you please call on people as um as you see their, see them in order?
Sure, we got uh twenty-eight people online, thank you for joining us, um. First up is Douglas Selby, Doug Selby, hey. Followed by Pam Boyd, Doug?
Uh, hi, um, I actually, um, I was, uh, I was here for the consent agenda items, specifically G five. Um, did I, did I miss something? That?
Doug, thank you for hanging out with us, but we passed all that, you're good.
Oh, okay, well. That was a long meeting. That's, uh, yeah, you guys have uh been doing yeoman's work here, that's a lot of, lot to go through tonight, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your work.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
He's a super nice guy. Pam Boyd, followed by Jonathan Greenberg, Pam?
Thank you, um, first off, I'd like to thank Mr. Fink and Michael, I won't try to pronounce your last name, for your comments tonight and helping this board get to where they got through tonight. Um, I uh would also like to thank Clerk Flintoff for, as it turns out, being right. Uh, or most right, in this case, uh for the last several months' struggle to get to this point. I think apologies should be given to the clerk for the vitriol that some board members have thrown at the clerk. It's shameful. She knows her job better than you know your own jobs. And she has done a very good job, and this could have been taken care of months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, Jonathan?
Hi Pam, you kind of took the words out of my mouth, um, I think it's uh interesting if we kind of look back here and kind of see how we started off and what, why this all came about and um, I'm going to ask this question again, but how much of your time and of citizens' time, legal time, how much time and energy and money went into getting us to this point today? It doesn't make sense. And so I started wondering to myself out loud. Most people are used to me talking to myself at this point. I started thinking about it, and I went back to some earlier emails and um, records that I've been keeping of the meetings from the last couple of years. And uh, it, it, it was really clear here that a lot of this was because one of our residents offering uh legal advice, who specifically said, I mean, said out loud uh in her uh communications and to the, to the board as well as to uh us as a community, that she was a legal, what, what was it, uh legal, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the quote right now. Um, but uh she said she was a corporate municipal finance attorney, and she flashed her status to the board and you followed her advice. So, in the interest of not finding ourselves in this situation, I started to ask myself, why is that, why would that, well, it all started on August seventeenth, we all know what's going on. We all know what the story is. And with Jane showing her true colors again pre-meeting today, um, it's pretty clear that there is example after example after example of this board taking a shot at Jessica at any chance they get. The notes that I see here, you know, from this uh a, attorney who uh gave you advice that you followed, um, provided meeting uh communications that had all kinds of uh interesting accusations, all pointing at the clerk and basically saying the clerk is at fault for this uh debacle that we find ourselves in, this was a debacle. And I find it interesting, her, yeah, thanks, Jane. Uh, I find it interesting that her video is off at the moment, but this was a mistake of grand proportions, an expensive one, that the board went along with because they thought they had something. And in the end, what happened was you came around, you realized that it wasn't going to work, so you solved your problem tonight. All these legal answers were there months ago. There's nothing new tonight, except your little play didn't work out. It started to look bad, people were complaining to the Michigan State Attorney, and so the board decided, ah, we, this isn't working out the way we wanted, so better fix it and move on. Stop taking shots at Jessica, it's so obvious, so clear what you're doing, that the community is rallying around her and continues to come to her side in this because it's very.
Thank you, Jonathan, for your comment. At three minutes. Um, next up is Paula Jean, followed by Harvey Summers, Paula Jean?
Yeah, I remember the night, and I want to say this for a future uh format for the minutes, uh as a board member Jerome, who's uh not there at present, uh wanted to cut out all public comment. And I remember just being so dumbfounded that I had to make a comment about freedom of speech that this, as long as I lived and gone to board meetings, had never uh had anyone make, to say that public comment, unless it's, it had something really obscene in it, uh shouldn't be included, and I think it's very important uh that uh whether it's negative or positive, that public comment, because we are the people that elected you all, be included in the minutes. And that's, uh, I feel very strongly about that, and I remember chastising him because he was an independent who I thought uh supported freedom of speech. And that's, that's just my comment and feelings.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Harvey Summers, followed by Pat Stein, Harvey?
Still on twenty-one, twenty-nine Autumn Hill Drive. I would like to encourage our clerk to continue more extensive minutes for future meetings. Especially at this time of extensive resident discomfort with the board. The more complete discussions among the trustees should continue to be reflected, as should the voices of the people. Uh, it's been a really long year. You've worked really hard. My best wishes to all of the members of the board for a better twenty-twenty-two, happy and healthy, traditional greetings, and to trustee Jerome, boy, I hope he's all right. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did pass on a message in the chat from Alec Jerome to others in the chat, but he did leave the meeting, he wasn't feeling well, his wife is with him and, and taking good care of him, so he thanks everybody uh for their concern. Next up is Pat Stein, followed by Jillian Carey, Pat?
Still in Siota Township, I just wanted to comment on Jonathan Greenberg's comments, which I wholeheartedly agree with one hundred percent, with the exception, he referred to the person that gave the bad legal advice as a resident of the township. I believe she is a resident of Washtenaw County, but not necessarily Siota Township. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Jillian Carey, Jillian?
Yes, thank you. Um, if I remember correctly, our Christie Aiken at the, um, she is a court reporter. She knows how to do transcriptions and whatnot, and so we're spending, what, six to eight thousand dollars on an outside transcription company? When couldn't we just throw that at Christie and have her work a couple extra hours, since she already knows how to do all of this? It just amazes me that instead of doing your statutory, statutory duty, which is very easy to follow, it's in the Open Meetings Act, public bodies, um, that we are to this point wasted a lot of time, and now we're spending more taxpayer money. I have a, just a, I'm very concerned about the fiscal irresponsibility. In fact, I believe that was trustee Vogel's campaign promise in her biography. Um, yeah, okay, well, thank you for getting this together and, and working, this is probably the first meeting I've seen you actually work pretty much together. Um, and I hope that trustee Jerome is okay, that's concerning, um, Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Next up is Johnson, Johnson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, uh, well, I, the resident, a few speakers before me mentioned that Jerome had entered in to evidence that uh they had said there should be no public comment. I actually believe that was actually Hathaway that entered in that message to say, nope, on Zoom, there should be no public comment. I don't know if that's true. Talk about that amongst yourselves, uh, that might have been him. And then furthermore, um Zoom people should still be included, and we, because you can't be present, it doesn't mean that your comments should be excluded, whoever offered that opinion. No, they should all still be included. And, I have another point. Uh, no, that, I'll leave it at that, because honestly, you have to speak to the residents. You're not a standalone body, you're waiting for people to support you, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Johnson. I see no other comments. Um, I have one brief comment, Will.
Is this responding to a point of fact?
Uh, it's a comment regarding our next meeting.
Okay.
And, um, again, the po- the point of fact thing is something we can talk about, um, with rules of order. Um, I, I just want to say, um, I, I would note to the board, um, Nancy Hedberg's minutes, um, long form, about as long as the ones I do now. Um, different ways of doing it. I am open to speaking um, with board members about how I do it, but again, until we right the ship, um, I am, I am feeling inflexible. Regarding our next meeting, Will, regarding what you said to the Ann Arbor Observer and announced tonight about somehow donating back part of your salary, please provide any of that, um, more detail on that at our next meeting as to what that proposal would look like. Because just when I read that in the Observer, I didn't immediately understand how that would be legal and kosher. And if it's something we need to talk about in closed session, we can. But I do want to know more about that because it seemed improbable to me, um, how that would work. So that's all for our conversation. And I do want to echo Jeff Jackson from the beginning, wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I am glad that we were able to get some business done tonight. So thank you, everybody.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Vogel? Support by, support by Noel, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Quarto?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero, meeting adjourned at ten ten.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Yep. Happy New Year, good care.